Good evening and welcome back to morning. We will start with the article. Don Aman here, Stephen Claire.
Here.
Jeff Stevens.
Here.
Terry Jamie.
Yes.
Dallas Bond.
Here.
Dayman Davis-Epson. Jennifer Stelt.
Yes.
And we have Christine Norland present. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I should have said that first. Any discussion on it? Okay? All in favor, aye. Approve, abstain, motion carries. We're going to move on to the presentation by the mission. D B T C student employee community service awards. Welcome everybody. We're very pleased to present the following complimentary association of school board awards to the Dollar Bay, Tamara City recipients. Dean worthy of this honor by the members of this board and administration. Due to COVID-19 hitting last spring, we were unable to have the celebration and present these awards at that time, so the 2020 and 2021 recipients will all be honored tonight. We're very pleased that most of you were able to join us tonight and we say special welcome to parents who were able to be here as well. We will begin with the student awards. The student leadership award is presented to a student from each district at any grade level who has demonstrated significant leadership in school and community activities. Recipients should be notable for their efforts to initiate change or stimulate improvement in their school and community, rather than for simply having served in an official leadership capacity. Typically, these students will be characterized by their self-motivation and initiative and by their ability to identify a goal and go effectively toward it. Louise Clarkson stepped up and led the student council as president in 2020. She took her role very seriously and did an excellent job throughout the year, taking personal responsibility for everything that was planned and took place. That winter's spirit week participation was better than ever, largely thanks to her dedication and leadership. In addition, she was a model CTE student. While in the versus eight program, she took on an organ donor drive and really wanted to see D V win. Louise always worked very hard to get the grades, which is worthy of praise. In addition, she is truly kind and good to everyone. We present this slide to Louise, who's coming up. And now for the student impact award this year. In fact, there are two student impact awards. This award is presented to a student from each district at any grade level who has demonstrated outstanding creativity, leadership, or character, and who has initiated improvement in school or community, demonstrated unique approaches to problem solving, or made other contributions that have significantly enhanced the learning environment or advanced the mission of education. The award recognizes the contributions of students who might unnecessarily receive traditional awards. Helen Belikovovich is definitely an unsung hero at our school. She is a quiet leader with a clear vision of wanting to make the world a better place. She's quiet but not shy, and Helen stands up for what she believes in and is always herself, even when that is different. Modestly and humble, she sets the bar high for classmates to match her high standards. Last year, Helen helped start an environmental club before COVID shut down. Helen too is a very hard worker. Congratulations, Helen. And our next recipient is not able to be here because he is competing early in the track meeting, but I will read about him, Mr. Randell. Dwayne Randell is a polite, kind, helpful, extroverted leader in the classroom. Though he's not in an official leadership position, Dwayne does seem to every day in class discussions and more. In online school, he was one who could always even rely upon to have his camera on, stay engaged, and active. Right? Intellectually curious, thinking about deep things on a deep level and talking about them. We're pleased to present this to Dwayne. Over the last year or so, Dwayne has become the model of what a D V student can and should be, emulating what it needs to be. Congratulations to Dwayne, and I hope that he knows he'll have his plaque tomorrow morning in school. We will now move on to employee awards. Outstanding education employee. The outstanding education employee award is presented to one employee, a teacher, administrator, or staff person of each district, who has given exemplary service on behalf of education. The recipient should be characterized for having had significant and meritorious impact on the education of students or the success of an educational system. Hacky Hill is one of those people who does a ton of behind-the-scenes work. Making the Washington Excitement Happy a few years ago was a huge undertaking, but she had the idea and was up to the task, gaining reputation of one of the most amazing fundraisers your school has ever seen. Last year, she was a co-leader for the travel club, which is just getting off the bat again this year, because she's always looking for great opportunities for our students. She's a dedicated, hard-working class advisor, not to mention having been leader of the local history snapdown and quiz bowl teams for years. Mrs. Hill contributes a lot to the good parts of our school and isn't often recognized for it. She's often the first teacher in school in the world in the last two weeks. Congratulations, Mrs. Hill. And Kristi Hanen is an outstanding educator, one of the best I've known at classroom management. Over the past few years, she has been instrumental in leading our school way forward in terms of free access at the elementary level, where our benchmark assessment scores have grown to a level we would not have imagined a few years back. By coaching other teachers on behavior interventions through one-on-one conversations and teaching other staff not only the nuts and bolts, but also the deeper philosophy of positive behavior interventions and supports, Mrs. Hanen has positively shaped our positive school climate at the elementary level. This means not only a better education for our students, but also an all-around better school experience for all students and staff. Congratulations, Mrs. Hanen. And finally, we've got two school service awards to present tonight. The school service award is presented to one individual each district who has given outstanding service to education. Recipient may be student, employee, or community member and should be notable for his or her contributions to the quality of education above and beyond expectations associated with their job or status. These should be people who have sparked the works for the district. Mr. Robert Rowe, our woodshop teacher, a hand at home at the district here with us, gives a lot of his own time to the one career big woodshop position he holds. He also gives a lot of his own materials and skills. It's not uncommon to see Mr. Rowe walking into his truck with some parts or some piece of shop equipment of that nature care, which he's one to do at home. When we had to cut down some of the trees across the street during the parking lot, Mr. Rowe made sure that the woodshop students were able to use it, arranging for a friend to cut it into boards. Mr. Rowe inspires students to do wonderful, creative woodshop projects so that they can learn the skills that will last them a lifetime. Both Mr. Rowe and his lovely wife have made monetary donations to the woodshop program. And Mr. Rowe is the kind of person who, if he knows you, can't help himself from helping you in some way. My personal case in point is two days ago, he gave me and my husband this almost entire Saturday and some of these trees for a project that we were doing. Congratulations to Mr. Rowe. And last but not least, Judy Fuchs was new to our school in May 2018 and hit the ground running. She established the second chance breakfast for hungry middle and high schoolers following first period, so those who couldn't get it in time to breakfast before school could still get better. She managed her kitchen efficiently and effectively from day one. Judy has been instrumental in designing her new certified school kitchen, which is now growing strong. Over last spring and summer, she provided countless meals for our students when school was not in session, starting on the very first day of the COVID shutdown. The food Judy prepares is top-notch, and that is evidenced by the fact that we have continued to break records for counts. Just last week, she served 118 breakfasts and 228 lunches. These are amazing numbers. And last but not least, she gets to know the kids down to cut quater or what we call the light vest. Congratulations to Miss Judy. Congratulations, Louise.
Thank you. Busy day.
And we're going to move on to the whole day. Not much has changed. Our interaction rates remain high. Week one in April, ninety-five percent; week two, ninety-six; then ninety-seven, and it got down to ninety-six. So we continue to have a good student engagement. We do find that the students who are not in person are, of course, the hardest to engage. So we have teachers who staff or work the hard with their best to keep those students connected. We will continue to offer education to students front and in person with the option of for high school students, distance learning, and for all K-12 students, online options. Any public comments? Let me see if I can...
Have a extended learning plan?
Oh. Is this a public comment? Hi.
There is a special comment area exclusively about the COVID-19 extended learning plan.
Thank you.
Recommendation, recommendation to approve this month's confirmation of how and such it would deliver the D B T C various schools that have COVID-19 learning plans. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Repeat what you mentioned. Senator, let's get that. We have a discussion about COVID-19 learning plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, abstain, motion carries. Okay, and we're going to move on to public comment. Do you have a question next night? Yes, now, please.
Alright, so I got an email just pretty recently, and it started with, "There's no tired like teacher tired" in the last month of the school year." Boy, that's true. But as educators, we know how we finish this year is just as important as how we start it. And we started this school year with a two-day training with a capturing the kid's hearts process. It's a process that acknowledges that the students we teach are emotional beings, and we are emotional beings. And if you capture that kid's heart, you're going to capture the kid's mind. And this capturing the kid's heart process really focuses on our relational capacity, our school culture, trust, self-accountability, and really care for all. A tool that we build this relational capacity with our students, the one we use to explore where our students are at emotionally, personally, and even academically, is good things. We'll pause during class, and we ask those students to identify good things in their lives. We have some of our students share these good things with the whole class. We show our interest by asking follow-up questions to that good thing. And the class applauds after each good thing, because leaders, citizens, people that care, know how to be happy for others. The applause shows respect, whether or not you agree with that good thing. So to model to others how we're going to finish this school year with positivity, perseverance, and grit, and to set us up for success next year, some of the teachers here are bringing you good things. Now, it's modified from the classroom version to fit into the public comment. So I'm going to begin. I have two good things. One of them's actually a thing, the other one's people. So the first one is I have a projector in my classroom now that you can see from the back of the classroom when you're socially distanced, even on a sunny day. It's awesome. Everybody, thank you. Thank you. Students in my room have entered their work and research in Michigan Tech's Student Design Expo, along with tech seniors presenting their senior work and the university enterprise teams. They had to make a video, a professional poster, and were subject to live questioning from industry professionals. Other students followed that up with a live virtual presentation in the Lake Superior Youth Symposium, where again, they were live, and students and other teachers in other areas of Michigan around the Great Lakes were asking my students questions on the fly, and I never had to worry about what my students were going to say. They represented Dollar Bay in the most amazing ways, and those are the kids I get to interact with and try and have their hearts out. It's amazing.
What is your name and what do you teach?
My name is Matt Zimmer, and I teach sixth through twelfth, maths, and science, and robotics.
Thank you.
Do we have another public comment?
I'll go ahead. I'm Mary Radio, and I teach English. I was lucky enough to be in on three interviews last week for the English position that we're hiring for. And one asked at the end of the interview, he said, "Why do I want to teach there at Dollar Bay?" It was really difficult to put into words, like the magic that happens here in the Dollar Bay family. But I tried to let him know that next year will be year number thirty for me. And at first, my goal was to leave and to go to a big school, and I thought that was where I needed to be. After a short time here, and the magic started to happen, and the connection that I have with my colleagues and with the students and how you feel as part of things, I let him know that there's just nowhere else he would want to teach, and you have to be a part of things in order to feel that. And so he's coming to Dollar Bay, so that felt really good.
Public comment?
Mars Schmidt, Tamara City.
Would you like a microphone?
What, am I not audited?
How can you hear me?
You can hear me. Alright, I just want to make sure. I really appreciate the fact that we have so many accomplished students here in Dollar Bay and Tamara City, and all of the awards have been because of the diligence and hard work. However, one of the problems I have is I could hear the sound, but I couldn't understand what was being said. And, you know, since I have major hearing loss, I'm not able to adjust my hearing to rely on advice. So I would ask that the school board consider offering virtual opportunity to be able to hear these meetings and be able to do it. This is something that's, you know, allowed under the Americans with Disabilities Act, Title II, in which reasonable accommodations are made to help those who are not able to fully participate without some assistance. So I would appreciate it if in future meetings the option of virtual hearing or virtual meetings be offered, and then also that this is an opportunity for more participation by others who may have different types of limitations besides time. So if it's possible, you know, I would like to ask the board to do this and, you know, follow the federal law on this particular issue. And since you have all the equipment for virtual meeting, it's a reasonable request on my part. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have another public comment?
So real quick, you guys hear me? I'd just like to say, not only is this small and statured school still open, but it's thriving, and I don't even feel we've hit our limit. Twenty-five years ago, we were supposed to shut. That was during the street. Hancock was going to swallow us up. Didn't happen, won't happen. And it's because everybody in this room works. I just want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm going to have a harder time being heard, so I'm going to really yell. I would like to piggyback on everything that my colleagues here have shared tonight. I think what makes us truly unique, truly special, is that in this school, in this district, from the top down, we care about the whole child. We care about social and emotional learning, and we focus on the whole person, developing the whole person for citizenship into the future.
Any other public comment?
I would like to take down the mic. I've been teaching thirty-seven years, twenty-five years here at Dollar Bay. This is by far the most difficult year I have challenged. On the other end of that, it's been difficult for everybody. Maybe most of all, for parents at home. It's been difficult in the school board, administration, it's been difficult as teachers. But I have felt encouraged, heard, supported in every way. It's great to see you guys have done a tremendous job of knowing what all the requirements are, passing that on to us, and getting us a position to teach. I do not think our students lost anything this year. With the extra loan that we had, the support of the funds, that was greatly appreciated. And I just want to say that you're appreciated for all that you have done. And it's a great staff to work for, it's a great administration to work for, it's a great school board to work for. Thank you.
Thank you. Another public comment?
I'll go. Kristi Hanen in, I teach first grade. I'm just going to piggyback off of what Bill said. It has been a tough year for all of us. And at the beginning of the year, when we had option two at the elementary level, that was very stressful coming back to the year. But I really appreciate the administration and the board listening to our concerns, trying to figure out what was best for all involved. And for me, that means a lot, just being heard and being willing to give my opinion and know that it matters. So I thank you, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Kristi. We appreciate you all. Our next. My first good thing is for both Mrs. Hanen and I, and that's due to the passage of the bond. Our young kindergarten and first grade students of this community and surrounding communities at a ten-dollar bay do not have to leave the classroom to go to their lockers or to use the bathroom, as though they're not included within our rooms. This means students do not have to leave the classroom as often has they have in the past. This is important because the chances of students being in the classroom during an emergency situation is now much greater than it used to be. Fire, tornado, and especially lockdown drills can be extremely scary for all involved, and having a classroom teacher be with their students during such a situation is calming for those scared individuals. We also have large brick walls to protect us during the event that we ever have to practice being safe. And that's how I tell my kinders that we're practicing inactive shooter drill or having a lockdown, I just tell them, "We're practicing being safe." And if you've ever had to huddle together and see the look on five-year-old faces during a lockdown drill, you realize what a huge impact our new classrooms have made in that regard. So that was from both of us. And then my good thing is I feel like the superintendent and this board no longer view us as dollar signs that are replaceable. I now feel that Mrs. Norland and the new composition of this board realize the value of the teaching staff that you have before you right now. Many positive changes have been made throughout the past few years. And although not everything is perfect here, I know issues can now be talked about in a respectful manner and that concerns can be brought up without fear of retaliation or threats against us. I can now walk into the district office without fear or anxiety. And that, to me, is a good thing. There's trust, and there's safety again. So thank you. Thank you.
I'm thankful, first of all, for all of the new renovations that we have in our district. It is so wonderful to have the new classrooms, the new lunchroom space downstairs where the students can be spread out, a food service. Everything that happened due to the bond, I'm just so thankful for. I'm also thankful for the constant, unwavering support from Mrs. Norland and the board. And lastly, I'm very thankful to be a part of this D B T C family.
What is your name? Carrie, would you like to make a comment?
My name is Cindy Barth. Can you hear me? How about, can you hear me now? My name is Cindy Barth, and I would have liked to have heard a lot of your comments, but it was very difficult to hear your comments because you were facing forward. And also in the future, I would like to have you say what your name is and then teach at this school and what grades you're teaching, because a lot of us don't know who you are. So that'll be a way to make it better the next time you speak. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Kim Heltzer. I teach middle school social studies and K through five computers, and I'm also a parent. Recently, we got new Chrome cards in the middle school, high school, and elementary, and I feel like it's been a great addition to the transitions and our learning and the students being able to access that technology and learn and grow. So I appreciate the money being spent on those things that we use in our classroom every single day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marissa Cantola. I'm a third grade teacher here in Dollar Bay, and I'm also a parent to two school of choice students here in the district. One of the good things that hit really close to home for me this year that I'd like to thank Mrs. Norland and the board for their support on is the splitting of the third grade classroom full-time that happened after January. There were lots of really great conversations that Mrs. Norland and I had for the first few months of the school year, and I really appreciated her openness and her interest in making sure that we were getting the best instruction possible for our third graders. And the split had an immediate positive impact, and I'd like to thank all of you for your support in that. your support in that. So, on behalf of myself, Mr. Stahl, the other third-grade teacher, and all the third graders here in DBC, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Records of board meetings, financial statements, checks written in previous month. Do we have a motion? Oh, sorry. Jeff, and do we, and I'll second. Do we have a discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And then, any comments? Superintendent, that's wonderful.
All right. Let's start here. Last month, we discussed the opportunity to apply for the school lunch debt forgiveness program, which we did, and we heard back that in order to be eligible for that grant, we need to have a policy in place that indicates certain things, which is included in your packet, things like the students will not be punished, basically, if they are not able to pay their debt. And so, we contacted the law, the policy people, and they did share a policy that fit that requirement, so I'm going to be asking the board to do that. We have until tomorrow to resubmit that, so just in time. So, it does sound like it's going to be hopeful, like there is money available there, and we're letting you know what we receive, yes, and what we do. There is updated, obviously, COVID requirements and regulations that everybody knows about. That does not affect our regular operations in school. Masks, school服, covering, the nose and mouth are still required, and both the CDC and the DHS want schools to continue those protocols through the remainder of the school year. One thing that has changed though locally, and if you recall, we are dictated by everything that our local health department decides for our school, is that close contacts are now considered, close contacts who need to quarantine if they come in, touch you with somebody that has a case of COVID, are those within three feet of that student or staff person for fifteen minutes, and it used to be six feet. So, although later I'm going to suggest that we discuss updating our COVID-19 comprehensive return to school plan, just so that we can follow what the local health department says. But that is a really nice thing, and that was in response to the local data that there really has been very little, if any, school transmission of COVID in our local schools here in Copper Country. If you noticed a beeping as you came in, that's because our ABD machine is in need of a new battery soon, so that's the warning sound. And I want to take a moment to thank Jade Batcock, our art teacher, for taking on the project of applying for a grant for a new ABD machine, which we received, and which is also going to allow five of our staff members to be certified in CPR for free. So, thank you to Jade for that, that is about to be placed free to the school district. I am going to jump off of what Mr. Zimmer said a minute ago, when we have four awesome students, Obusween, Helen Velopovich, Mattson, and Yvonne, who represented the SOAR High School Enterprise team at the Virtual Lake Period Year Youth Symposium on Friday during second period, and they did a phenomenal job. They represented the Square One Education Network and the use of RORBs in lake research, and again, they made us proud as they always do. So, thank you to Matt for your great work with that program. Okay, job update. Last, we even met for a special meeting to talk about the antigen testing. I said I would hopefully have some good news for you on the custodial position. I'll have some different news on that at this point. As you know, we've been through many different people who have been able to step up and help, but only temporarily, and we did have somebody who was stepping in a little bit, but that did turn out also to be temporary, and we've just had a really, really hard time this year trying to fill that custodial position, starting with one of our custodians who had to be out due to an injury, but then also, as we get a little bit more research, because we have more smart footage in the building that needs to be cleaned. So, we do have some good news. Sydney is back with us and is doing well, so we're really happy that she's able to be putting in full days, and it's great to have her back, because there is an immediate improvement in, her just nodding out there, in a lot of our facilities, so we're really grateful that she's back with us. Terry has continued to do a wonderful job in the elementary wing, day in and day out. Brian has been a great job filling in where needed where possible, although he's very busy with a lot of the maintenance and other requirements that he's got, so we've got a great team. And very recently, just in order to help us make it through the last few weeks of this school year, our last leave felt here, we've had Mr. Kevin Butler pitching in a couple of hours a day, which we're really, really grateful for, so thank you, Kevin, for that. So, no new hires, but we can discuss that a little bit later, so that works out well for us anyway. On the teaching front, we have some really great news, actually. We are about to hire, hopefully, three new teachers. Our preschool search looked really well. We did have a few really high-quality applicants, and I'm going to be recommending to you one of the, well, I guess I'll tell you a little bit more about that when it's time to approve them, but we have a phenomenal candidate, and those of us on the interview committee felt really strongly about. She was great. Another woman also would be for that position, and when she spoke with us, she was wonderful too. She said some things that made me think she would make a phenomenal special education teacher. So, I talked with her, I discussed that possibility, and she said she would be open to taking on that position here, and would even be open to taking the classes to get that certification. So, that's really great news for the district. And then, last, Mrs. Rowdy mentioned in her comments that we met with some English teacher candidates this past week, and did decide to out of the job to a man who is currently downstate, although his roots are here in the U.P., in the Donny area, and he also knocked our socks off, and I think he's going to be a really great addition to the staff. So, we'll tell you more about that in a little bit, if you'd like, but we've had some good news up there in front. Totally different topic here. We are asked to move our June board meeting to six-thirty. If you recall, that is our budget hearing and our regular board meeting, and we have for the last few years since Tyler, our business manager, and I just had a conflict with Stanton because they need him up there as well, unfortunately, they need him the same day and the same time as us. So, we're going to actually move theirs to five-thirty. If we move ours to six-thirty, then Tyler should be able to be here. So, if the board would like to approve that officially, you can add that to the new business. Otherwise, we can just postpone, it's finally the last week. Okay, so part of our preschool licensing process has been getting different agencies in here to check out equipment and facilities in different ways, and about a week and a half ago, somebody came all the way from Lansing to inspect our playground, and we're talking about this small fenced-in playground that's within our larger playground, and it's got some equipment that's for smaller students, so it would be perfect for four-year-olds. Unfortunately, there is a tall platform with two slides coming off of it that will not be approved, and I'm asking the board if you'll consider what to do with that. We can't leave it there, so we basically have to remove it, and do we replace it with another piece of age-appropriate equipment for the young students, or are there other ideas that we have? Left on that playground will be another small playground set, and then a sand digging tool for the young ones, and that can either get repaired and stay or also go. So, if anyone has thoughts, or if you know that we do have, the bottom line is we do have to remove that tall platform with wood and two slides. Any questions? Okay. Okay, so, last, kind of an odd one. Our senior trip is coming up, and Mrs. Hale has asked, and the students are wondering, and the parents are wondering, well, how do we do that with COVID exactly? We will be with a group of students, kind of in close proximity, renting a house together. Some of the students will be sleeping in the same bedrooms as one another. We'll be driving all the way over their river area, Wisconsin, in vans together. Some students have been vaccinated and are clear past that two-week buffer, and some have not. Obviously, students will be eating together. Because we're so COVID-conscious here, they have planned a trip that's going to keep them largely outdoors, there are a lot of great activities, we're hoping for great weather, because that's kind of the point, but of course, they'll be inside a little bit. So, I did contact our health department support person on this, and this is actually, she sent me to Katie, or the director of the health department, and she suggested that all students be antigen-tested before they go, and we do have additional antigen tests for that, and I would look for the board to suggest whether that be required, or volunteering, or how we handle that, if you do go in that direction. Being part of the fact that I know that this board has made a statement about it, which is tested in regard to the athletics. She has said that it probably would be a good idea for traveling to keep the vaccinated students and the non-vaccinated students separate. She said, please keep the windows open as much as possible while traveling and while in the house. She said to cohort in small groups, like we call pods in our school, as much as possible, as she's more familiar with, if that makes sense. Be outdoors as much as possible, which is the goal. She said they should definitely mask in all the common areas of the house, and be ready to clean and sanitize frequently, so bring that equipment, of course, that's going to be needed, the wipes and so on. Eat outdoors whenever possible, and to minimize the time of eating and spread out while eating if they have to do it inside. So, those were the recommendations of our local health department. Do we have questions, comments from the board? The question is what the parents think about it, whatever the parents about, Kathy can go in to share. You have not heard anything, objections to the trip, or with concern that you want to be ahead of it now, obviously? Well, they don't know about those rules, that's just recently been found. The idea was, when Kathy and I had discussed this, that we would bring it to the board and see what the board thought. I mean, another thing is, obviously, we'll be having them sign disclaimers and permissions, which we always do on any one of our trips, and we'll obviously be adding some COVID language to that. Her strongest recommendation was to do the antigen testing, so that, you know, if somebody was coming down with COVID, they will bring that there, and obviously, unfortunately, affect everybody there. The concern of all of us, let me discuss this when we change the idea for going downstate, was we want the students to be able to graduate that fall on a Saturday. Steve said it doesn't seem like extraordinary measures. So, the board will be comfortable with following those recommendations of the local health department?
I would say that if a person's board is in, if they're in, that they should follow the recommendations.
Yeah, and the parents do know there's a parent risk in sending their kid to stay in the house with a group of other students, and everybody is aware of that. The students did put on, and we fought for it to help their own prom this past weekend, and there was great participation in that, which also tells us that parents are comfortable with their kids spending time with other kids in social environments. Okay? Thank you. And I believe that was it. Are there any questions? Moving on to actual discussion items. Do we have motions to approve the CCISD 2021-2022 budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the CCISD 2021-2022 budget.
Do we have a second? Is there a discussion on it? Mr. Stevens asked, why is there a big difference in the two budgets? And I can answer that. Mr. Sticaro Santinio is saying people have been raising that question, and here's what he said. Well, I'll just read the whole email. Some of you, or board members, have noticed that our budget for this year and next year are way different in amount of money, roughly twenty-four million dollars. Delo is the explanation for you to share with your boards, this was not something we expected at the start of the year. In 2020-21, the CCISD was the fiscal agent for the My Connect grant. The money was part of the CARE Act. We received the money from MAISA, and the CCISD distributed the money to districts throughout the state. The CCISD distributed that to districts across the state. MAISA coordinated it and provided us, the CCISD, with spreadsheets as to the amount each district received. There were two parts of the grant, a device purchasing rebate program and a connectivity program. The total of the two programs was twenty-four million eight hundred thousand dollars. That's the reason for the large decrease in federal revenue and outgoing transfers and other expenditures in the 21-22 budget. The increase in state revenue and increase in pupil support expenditures is due to Project Aware being a full year in 21-22. And then, he explains that the state has been using ISDs to funnel out state and federal dollars more and more frequently. Our ISD, we save ten thousand dollars to write all the checks. The GIO ISD, that's the GoVIVIC, Artnad and ISD, has been doing the same thing for all literacy grants, and many other ISDs are in charge of other grants. So, the Copper Country ISD was chosen for the My Connect grant because we had performed the same duty seven years ago for the TRID grant. So, that is your explanation. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now, the motions are approved, voting representative Don, England, and alternate Steve Leclair as DBTC's candidates to vote in the upcoming CCISD school board election, and to designate Karen Johnson, Anna Wolkas, Lisa Tarvenen, and Timothy Polisari, who are all uncontested, as DBTC's recommended candidates for election. I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Mr. Leclair asked if those who are recommended as the delegates should be included in the vote. I checked our number with the lawyer, and he said yes, you can in this case. So, you're okay voting on that, even though you're the last name? Thank you. So, abstained, and motion carries. Do we have a motion to continue the merger with REMC one for one day per week of onsite support and services for the 2021-22 school year? Jeff, and a second?
Second.
Yep. And do we have a discussion on it? Anybody? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Run D.D., we have a recommendation to approve school meal balance policy, A5OD. Do we have a motion? Sure. Okay. I will make the motion. Do we have a second? Do we have discussion on it? All in favor? Let me just explain something. So, this is a policy that was shared with us by Neola, as I mentioned, the A, B, C, D, E, and F, requiring students who cannot pay for school meals or have a negative balance to wear a responded hemstep is prohibited, and so on and so on, is what I was referring to earlier. Some of the Neola policy examples include what to do in the case of a student with a negative balance, and this board discussed that, I think, maybe about three years ago or so, maybe a little bit more. Do you offer them an alternative meal? Do you, you know, do you put something else in place that then would not allow the school district as much to get into a debt situation? In discussion with Judy Hoots, we said we don't care to recommend that to the board right now, largely because it's a moot point, because as I think I mentioned to you previously, all this year, all student lunches are free, and the state has recently decided to continue that through next year. So, this is not something we would be even dealing with in practice until two school years from now, and who knows what the lay of the mind will be by then, and... And both Judy and I are hoping and sort of feeling like the direction that we're going is maybe free lunches for all forevermore, you know? So we kind of feel like it's not the place and time right now to put that into our policy, and just to keep the policy very, very general, and say, we'll let, you know, we'll let the family know if their balance is relevant. So there is your explanation. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. E, we have a recommendation to modify the planning as a return to school plan to reflect loosening of COVID-19 restrictions by MDHHS. Do we have a motion? And I will support. Do we have a discussion on it? What I'm thinking on this one is that we'd just like to have our policies match our practice, and our practice match our policies. And that comprehensive plan that a lot of us worked long and hard to create that has really worked well for us this year. It does have statements in there, like, for example, on the quarantine, that being anybody within six feet for 15 minutes or more. My suggestion is that we put something, just as a note at the top of the plan, that says the district will remain in compliance with the local health department regulations and make changes to school COVID protocols as recommended by the local health department. And that way, if something else comes along, like this three-foot-six foot thing, we wouldn't have to have a meeting to make that specifically happen. That's what I'm suggesting, just, I mean, we've got only four weeks left of the school year, just to make that more smooth. Does that sound okay to everybody? Alright. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And then moving on to F, just now. We have a recommendation to approve the hire of Alyssa Brandt as preschool teacher director, class director. Do we have a motion? And do we have support? Do you have supports? And do we have a discussion? Yes. So Alyssa Brandt is this lovely, energetic young lady. She's been teaching kindergarten for like four years, dumb state. And her real passion, she made very clear to us, is in the preschool age environment. And she was so beautiful and engaging as she talked about her love of this age group, and how she loves to just be down on the floor with them, engaging them, figuring out what they're excited about, what they're interested in, and then just using that to help them grow. She has experience using the curriculum that we're going to be required to use as a great start writing this program for school, so that's fantastic, and gave her an edge over the other candidates. She has experience doing the quote-unquote grading, which is a lot of anecdotal kind of summaries of the things that kids say and do in the classroom. So she comes with experience in the actual things that we need, and her passion is just absolutely contagious. And we all felt like she would immediately win the hearts of all of our students and our parents. So we're really excited that she really wants to come. And her roots are in this area, kind of this understanding from mother lives next door to the cantor's. And she's got a significant mother, who I believe works at work. So it's strong community connection as well, which is something we always ask about in interviews, because people don't really know the area, you know? You never know what's going to happen. So we feel really strong about her. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on. Do we have a motion to approve the hire of Kimberly Dart as special education teacher, primary elementary? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second? And then a discussion? So Kim Dart is all-around excellent for a senior. She actually was interested in another position that we had here within the district previously, and did a phenomenal job interviewing for that, and then did a phenomenal job interviewing for this preschool position. She came with experience as a teacher. Again, we'll say the kindergarten level, whatever grades as well. And also several years of office management, and kind of administrative assistant experience. And she thought that would lend itself really well to the preschool position, which of course it would, because it's a teacher-director position. But those kind of qualifications also lend themselves really well to a special education teaching position, because anybody who knows education knows that unfortunately, each part of that job is the people who are part of making sure that we're in compliance and how the Is are dotted and the Ts are crossed. So she had spoken a little bit in her interview recently about extensive experience using different interventions and developing textbooks and curricula. And so that to me said, well, this is a person who's got a breadth of experience in the way that we need a person to, if they're going to be working with small groups of students or individuals on interventions to improve their reading skills and all of those other things that we have our special ed students in the resource room for. So I did call her and ask if she'd be interested in considering that. And I shared with her the opportunity that the CCISD and NMU now have in their partnership in allowing approved candidates to get their credits, to get their learning disabilities endorsement free of charge. She was really interested in that as well. They moved here last summer. Her husband is working out at their land here. Her kids are happy in the area, and they plan to stay too. They actually, they actually took out a map and discussed all the areas of the country that had great schools and affordable class of living and a good quality of life. And they chose Holden for that reason. They moved here and have been happy. So that's also pretty remarkable. They made it through one winter, they know it was a light winter, but they're planning to stay here. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to our last one here. We have a motion to approve the hire of Sean Cole as middle high school English teacher and Clark Prime Middle High School Special Education teacher. I'll support. And no questions, very good. So we posted for the English teacher position a couple of months ago, and did get some applicants for this one. Three of them rose to the top, and so we had interviews this past week for those three candidates. The position itself has been kind of a little bit hazy, a little bit in question because, well, just because of how the nature of the small school. He's, we need to hire somebody to replace Jesse Kendallow on one hand, who was half-time English and then taught some electives, and then half-time school counseling. But we also have some other needs. For example, the substrate moving up to the middle school, high school, mean that you've got some hours to fill there. And as you know, we've had teachers across our awesome staff filling in those kind of gaps, and for Jesse since the middle of the year. So we kind of need to fill a lot of roles. We need some English at the middle school level, we need some English at the high school level. In addition, we've got this need continuing for special ed. As you know, we really have 1.5 positions that we need to fill. We've got 14 at the elementary level, 16 at the middle high school. And the cap for just allowance that the state gives us for a school is about 20, between 20 and 24, they won't give you a straight answer if you ask what it is for a K-12 school. So we have a real need for all of these positions. So I had kind of a similar conversation with Sean Cole after I checked his references, and everybody had positive things to say. So we'd love to have him as a middle high school teacher. People said he was really phenomenal, really engaging with students in terms of close reading, of literature, of writing. But would you be interested at all in special education? And the reason I thought of him for that is because he had worked for a year from a nominee school, helping students who were kind of on an alternative path. So maybe some of his students had young children and were trying to complete their studies with the online program. And they just, you know, as I've said every time, those are the students who had the hardest time completing and engaging. So his job is to engage them, to reach out to them, to support them, to help them, to move them along through those programs so that they could get to families even though they were on alternative paths. So I thought, oh, that's very similar to what a high school special education teacher is asked to do, actually. And he said, yeah, actually, I didn't expect you to say that, but that is something I would be interested in. So he's willing to do that, and I'm not sure exactly how we'll shake it out, if it's going to be a .25, special ed or .5, which is what we really should do. And then the other happy noise, or what exactly? And then in new business, I want to talk with you about that little sixth grade need as well. So that's Sean Cole. Any questions on him? From the Royal Oak. And okay, from one more funny thing, is a parent was outside of the school this morning and saw somebody...